At 7:02, the Chair declares the special town meeting in order. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand. Gentlemen, please remove headgear. Mr. Galant, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, will be leading us in the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Galant.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? It sounds like you can. One, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. You may be seated. Before we begin with the meeting proper, the Chair is going to recognize Mr. McLean to discuss and to explain, I should say, to explain the handouts. Mr. McLean.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate Quorum right on time. That was excellent. So I want to take a brief moment to explain the articles in front of you so you understand the documents that we handed out. So the yellow document is the printed warrant, has been available on the website and was mailed to Eat Home in the form of a postcard. The white document, which should be the second document, is the amended budget vote that you will be asked to weigh in on tonight. Any changes from the June annual town meeting are highlighted in yellow, and in the budget portion, I will be explaining on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee those changes. The next, what color would we call this, Lori?
Plum.
Plum. This plum sheet is Warren Article Information Explanations. So this is the answer to the question, what is this article trying to accomplish? This is the basic answer. If you don't want to come up and ask, here's one way of answering that question. Of course, we entertain all questions. And the green sheet, the last sheet, is a site plan that's been available in the Town Clerk's office for a communication tower that is being proposed at 21 Gardner Road and entertained under an easement in Article Six. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. The Chair, at this point, is going to appoint as checkers, as counters, excuse me, Joyce Green and Bella Caldera if needed. So thank you both very much. Mr. Galant, Article One. Mr. Galant moves that the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article Seven of the June 2020 Annual Town Meeting by reducing the amount to be transferred from free cash by $50,000 and adjusting certain line items as highlighted in the handout for this town meeting, such that the sum of $3,819,248.99 is raised and appropriated, and the sum of $100,000 is transferred from free cash for a total of $3,919,248.99 to meet the salaries and compensation of town employees and town officers as provided by Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, and for the expenses and outlays of the town departments, excluding the schools, and other sundry and miscellaneous but regular expenditures necessary for the operation of the town for fiscal year 2021, and further to accept and expend federal and state funds to offset certain salaries or expenses and outlays. And to meet these appropriations, the town votes as follows. General Government, the amount $850,169.99. Public Safety, $1,361,590. Public Works, $839,688. Indirect Costs, $615,351. Debt, $252,450. Total General Fund and Operating Budget, $3,919,248.99. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Williams. It is recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. The Chair recognizes
Good evening again. It's been a long time. All right. So I want to explain the budget document. That is the white document so you understand the vote and the language that was just shared. So the top half of the white document is the town revenues, the money that comes in that allows us to operate the town. So new growth, when we vote this in June, normally that's an estimation of what the new growth would be. We now know the exact number for new growth is 14,500. New growth is anything added to the tax rolls in the form of additions to houses, new houses, or anything commercial. The next change is in free cash. So we asked Town Meeting to support $150,000 in free cash usage to help supplement the budget. We use this larger number than normal because of COVID and its impacts on what we thought at the time were state revenues. We no longer need that, and it's not best practice to use a one-time revenue in the budget, so we're recommending that it be taken out. The next line is total receipts or local aid. So this is money that comes from the state. The state recommended to us that we budget at a level similar to the 2008 financial crisis, which was a 15% to 20% reduction in state aid. We used that recommendation at Town Meeting to balance the budget, which was a significant hit on revenue, which is why we use some of the free cash. The Governor came out in July and said that he was going to level fund and promised to level fund state aid for all municipalities, and that we should use that level fund number, the same numbers last year, to supplement our budget. So that increased our revenue by quite a bit, which allowed us to, again, stop using free cash and increase some expenses, which I'll get to in one second. The second half of this page, this summary sheet, will be dealt with during the Capitol and other Warren Articles tonight, and we'll explain it. So if you flip with me to the line items, there's only five that are changing, and the changes are minimal. So first, under the Selectmen's budget, we had reduced legal costs a little bit to try and balance the budget in June, and we're asking that those be level funded back to $40,000 for a $2,000 change. Those are numbers that can go up and down based on the needs of the town, so to have that money is important. If you flip to the next page, the next yellow line you'll see is assessing assistant. So we were unsure how we were going to staff that position in June because we were expecting a vacancy. That employee is staying with us, so we're adding a little bit money to properly fund her salary for an additional $1,620. So if you flip one, two more pages, the next yellow line you'll see is building and maintenance services, which we took $1,000 from to help balance the budget. We've already overspent this budget due to a ceiling collapse in the Slade Building, and we continue to have to put money into the Slade Building because of its disrepair. So having additional money here helps us make sure we don't have to come back for money. I know it's only $1,000, but it's already a tight budget, and it's budgeted as tight as possible, so we're not wasting money. Flip one, two more pages. You'll see the school budget changed. That's going to be voted in the next article, and we do that so that the Quabbin Regional School District budget has maximum transparency. The school, we're not going to vote this in Article One, but just to explain it now, the schools took the budget that we used in June and accepted that budget when they changed their vote. So they said that budget was appropriate. They made that number work by using $1 million in unspent monies to offset the operating costs for next year, based off of reductions in costs because of COVID. The reason why this is going up 14,000 is because the state determined, based off property values and median income of everybody in town, that Hubbardson owes a little bit more than its peer towns. So when they calculated that cost out, even though the budget's the same, we owe 14,000 more. But that'll be voted in Warren Article Two. The last change, if you're still following me, one, two, three more pages, almost to the end. We, like all businesses and corporations, are being hit with a significant amount of unemployment claims because of the state of the economy. So the last two years, we've budgeted $10,000 for unemployment, and we haven't used a dime. So that's gone into free cash and helped us fund capital projects. This year, we are already pretty close to $10,000 in claims, so we're asking that the town support another $5,000 in that line item to try and stop the bleeding. So we're paying this to help former employees during this difficult time, but we need to account for it. And those are the changes. They seem small, but these adjustments will allow us to operate the way we told you we would, providing the service levels that we are providing under this new normal.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. If anyone wants to address any of the articles this evening, the Chair will direct you to the microphone in the center of the gymnasium. Please use that microphone. Before you begin with your comments, please state your name and your address. Is there anyone who would like to discuss any of the changes that have been outlined? The Chair hears none. All in favor of Article One, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And for the record, there are two opposed, and the article passes. Article Two, Mr. Williams moves that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,879,933 to pay its share of the Quabbin Regional School District budget for fiscal year 2021. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Duran. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. For the purposes of discussion, is there anyone who would like to discuss this article? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And there are two opposed, and the article passes. Thank you. Article Three, Mr. Duran moves that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $15,000 to the Capital Stabilization Fund. Seconded by Mr. Duran. Yes, Galant. Yes, thank you. Seconded by Mr. Galant. Is there any, this is recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for the purposes of discussion. Is there any discussion of this article? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Article passes unanimously. Thank you. Article Four, Mr. Parego moves that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $231,800 to pay for the fiscal year 2021 cash capital expenses as printed in the warrant for this town meeting, including all costs incidental and related thereto.
So we say 216A.
Let me see. Mr. McLean, did you want to?
That's the additional $15,000.
The additional $15,000. Okay. All right. Seconded, recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion as far as this article? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Article passes unanimously. Article Five, Ms. Young moves that the town vote to amend the Town of Hubbardson General Bylaws, Chapter Three, Vacancies and Appointments, to change the placement of the Appointed Position Planning Board Associate Member of, per zoning, per Town Zoning Bylaws, Article 7.6, from the section titled Other Officers to Be Appointed by the Board of Selectmen, to the section titled Officers to Be Appointed by the Board of Selectmen from among the residents of the town. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Williams. Recommended by the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion of this article? Yes, ma'am. Again, please state your name and your address before you begin.
Mary Robinson, Brigham Street. I was wondering if we could get from Town Council or somebody a definition of what a resident is in Hubbardson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carolyn Murray, Town Council. A resident would actually be somebody who declares Hubbardson to be their legal residence for purposes of, I guess the best indicia would be where they are registered to vote.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion of the article? Seeing none. Go ahead. Ms. Robinson.
Mary Robinson. One further question. If you declare this as your residence, how is that checked on? You know, if you have a residence in another town or another state, and you decide that you're going to participate in that state's voting, and you're also going to participate in the town voting, how is that determined?
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Actually, you would think that residency is a very simple thing to define, and in fact, when the United States Supreme Court has had to actually look at residency, it is not so simple. They look at things such as what is the person's intent? So, for example, this often comes up with registrars of voters matters when someone challenges whether or not someone should be a registered voter of a town. It could be where do you live, where do you pay taxes, where do you vote, any other kinds of indications as to where you declare your residency to be. There is no hard and fast definition of that. So in this instance, I would say when it comes to the appointing authority, if there's a question as to someone's residency, I think that there are some questions that the appointing authority could pose to the person, and if they're satisfied that Hubbardson is in fact their place of residency, I think they will take it, you know, they will make that determination.
So you do not have to be a registered voter to be a resident?
Registration of voting is one form or one, what they call indication or indicia of residency, but it is not necessarily the only one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of the article, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Article passes unanimously. Article Six, Mr. Galant moves that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant an easement to the Rutland Regional Emergency Communications Center on certain property hereinafter described for the purposes of providing enhanced 911 emergency services, as shown on a site plan and elevation dated August 1, 2020, prepared by Chappell Engineering Associates, LLC, on file with the Town Clerk. Said property being those premises located at 21 Gardner Road, shown as assessor's map 5C, Lot 134A, and described in a deed recorded with the Worcester South Registry of Deeds in Book 54,791, Page 67, "on such terms and conditions and for such consideration as the Board of Selectmen shall deem appropriate, and further to grant such access, utility, and related easements on such property as the Board of Selectmen deems appropriate to serve the radio communications tower and/or facilities installed within the easement area." Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Williams. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Is there any discussion of this article? Sir.
Good evening. My name is Brad Van Renterhem. I live on Cross Road. Some things that come to mind that I just would like to make available, I'll try not to be wordy. I lived in Rutland previously when they were going through their public safety tower behind their public safety building, and that tower turned out to not be as tall as they needed it. I would just like people to know, based on my experience, that at 160 feet tall, that's the height of a 16-story building. So I am not against public safety. I am not against enhancing communication, but this tower will certainly dominate the skyline of Hubbardson. So you have to take that in consideration. There's other things which I'm not an expert on, but there are some people who would question the proximity of the tower to Curtis Recreational Field. There's a variety of health studies done by the World Health Organization, WHO, and various European health organizations where they will not allow cellphone towers to be installed within so many feet of public schools and public playgrounds and rec fields. What I'm bringing forward tonight as something to counter what I'm bringing up is, is it possible, I'm not sure what the easement phase is, is it, I know what it is, but I don't know how close it is to construction, is it possible to allow a 30-day open window, and this will be challenging because of COVID and the town hall is closed, could you have a 30-day window where more people, more residents of the town could actually view this, and actually, we could have more of the town to approve this? Because like I said, it's like having a 16-story building sticking up in the middle of Hubbardson, and that's going to dominate your skyline when you have your cup of coffee out on your deck. Okay? So I guess that's all that I would like to say. Thank you.
Bella Caldera, Simon Hill Road. I'm sure if anyone considers the tower an eyesore, the recycling center has many leftover artificial Christmas trees, and we can just duct tape the branches of artificial Christmas trees all over it, and then people will just see a pleasant evergreen tree that's 160 feet tall. It'll be wonderful.
Thank you. Sir.
Good evening. I'm Chuck Fadeley, Natty Brook Road. I'm not an expert with radio communications, but I have an extensive experience with it, including amateur radio and working with multiple service agencies, including the state. What I can say is the amount of radiation that you would get from this tower at Curtis Field is significantly less than what you would receive simply from having a cellphone on a person that's next to you, first of all. Second of all, the fact that, first of all, all have issues with cellular service in most of the town, that's pretty much a given. This is going to create a serious resolution for a lot of those issues. Plus, if we thought our cellphones are bad, we've got all of our served agencies that have black spots out in the middle of the field where if something happened, if someone was injured, they wouldn't be able to get any communications to dispatch to be able to get someone out there to be able to help them. Something like this is absolutely critical, and the location where they're planning on putting it is probably the best you're going to find in town to be able to get coverage. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Galant, please.
Hi, just briefly. So just, and I know not everybody's as sort of involved in town government as those who are maybe sitting up here, but just so everybody knows, so this tower has been contemplated for at least five years. When we were first, I was on the Building Committee, the Senior Center Building Committee, and just sort of citing that land back in 2015, 2016, it was part of the geotechnical evaluation, which was going to be borings, that we're going to go in there to find out what kind of soil to be able to put a foundation for the radio tower in conjunction with some other construction there. So there have been many people, town people and others outside firms, who have sort of vetted the plan over the last four or five years, and, you know, lots of questions have been asked. So just know that this isn't something that just sort of came up. It's been talked about for a long, long time in collaboration with the Rutland Regional Dispatch and the sort of generous grant that we've been able to piggyback on to be able to, you know, hopefully improve the cell service here eventually significantly. So that was it.
Both the Dispatch Director and the Project Manager are here. If anyone has a specific question of them. Yes, sir.
Peter Wachem, Muskogee Ave. Who's going to own the tower? Who owns that tower?
So it'll be owned by Rutland Regional Dispatch?
So they will own it?
They'll own the tower. We have an IMA with the towns to provide that service. This easement allows them onto the land to construct and service the tower.
Intermunicipal agreement, IMA.
Another question is, now the land that's going on, town-owned land, it is? I don't know where it is. I don't know where 21 Gardner Road is, so.
Yes, it is. It's approximately across from the Go Green, or as some people know, the Pallet Chop.
Across from where? Excuse me?
The Pallet Chop, Go Green, Go Green Manufacturing, Curtis Rec Field, right across from there.
Oh, right, oh, okay. On the west side of the street. Okay. Okay. I mean, is there, I know on a cell tower, I can lease land and have an income from that tower. Is this an income property for the town, or is it taking money off of the regional dispatch?
Mr. McLean?
Thank you. So primarily, or the reason for this tower is to increase dispatch services, communication between our fire, our police in the region. There is an opportunity, given its size and height, to lease the space to cellular service companies after this process is complete. That would generate income, which would go to the tower owner, which is Regional Dispatch, which should, Michael, offset our dispatch assessment and reduce costs to the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else as far as discussion of this article? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. One, two. There are two in the negative, and the article passes. Mr. Galant, anything? Counselor?
I need to fix one for the article three.
Okay.
Because when you write the motion, you need an additional $15,000 to the fire special exhaust. If that does not sound appropriate, we keep having motions to review. The article three, for the purpose of paraphrasing, you're about to give $15,000.
Counselor has pointed out that there is a correction that needs to be made to Article Three. Article Three is?
Article Four.
Article Four. To Article Four. And Counselor is going to explain what that is. So we need a motion to reconsider. Mr. Galant will move to reconsider, seconded by Mr. Williams. Under discussion, the motion to reconsider. Is that you, Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So Article Four is the Capitol Plan. As has been discussed in communication with the town, a lot of this was deferred to, because of the COVID crisis and its impact on the budget. It deferred a lot of capital to give us some budget resiliency. Since that time, we've had some costs that were added to this. One of them is, we procured two years ago a exhaust mitigation system for the fire department, and at the time, we had allocated $57,000. So we went out to bid. It came in at $30,000 higher than we anticipated. So... So, in this original warrant, as you see here, it says $15,000. The reason why the number went up, and now we're asking you to support this number, is to support that purchase. So, instead of $15,000 for a fire exhaust mitigation system, we're looking for $30,000 and hoping, because we do need to rebid it, that it'll come in lower than that, and we won't need it, but we don't want to come back to you again. I just said a lot, so if there's any follow-ups.
So, procedurally, what's going to happen, there's going to be a vote to reconsider. That is before the town meeting at this point. If that passes, then there will actually be the correction to take place, okay, to reflect the additional $15,000. Okay. Any further discussion as far as the motion to reconsider? The Chair sees none. All in favor, signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards, and the motion to reconsider passes unanimously. Now, there's going to be a motion to amend Article Four, Section Five, from $15,000, which is printed, to $30,000, as explained by Mr. McLean. So moved by Mr. Galante, seconded by Mr. Williams. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend? Sir. Again, your name and your address, please.
This is South Transferriger, 65 Hillwood Road. Quick question. Do you understand there is a change, obviously, to item number, I believe it's number five?
That's correct.
I'm assuming there's a new obligation total? Could you please state that? As a result of this?
$231,800.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to amend, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards, and the amendment passes unanimously. At this point, the Chair sees that there's no further business before the special town meeting, and declares the meeting adjourned at 7:34 PM. Thanks for coming.